Yeah, no, I mean, with the
It was very But I mean, the last two games were just penalty fest. I mean, like thirty-two penalty Yeah. Seventeen was a bit much, yes. Yeah. It was, it seemed like it was every, every time there was a big play from Madison. It was
Eleven?
It stuck. I don't, I don't think it was intentional on the officials' part, but it was just just too much, because too much. Are you going to go to the game on Friday?
Um, yeah, we'll be good. We have a grand
Oh, who's that?
Uh, Mason.
Oh, okay.
All right, that would be great. And if that doesn't work, can you tell me between eleven and
Oh, okay, okay, for Eatonville. Okay, I did, I, you know, I saw it happen. I was in, I was in, I saw it happen. And I, I didn't know who did it. It was, and that was a clean hit, too. It was totally, it shouldn't have been clear.
But Yeah, it is good.
In that game, yeah.
Okay, we have two minutes, guys. We're going to start on time.
I thought it was a perfectly timed hit. Yeah.
Oh, you gonna laugh? It's all fun.
Such wisdom.
And so, that was it.
No, this is This isn't
This is the entire budget.
Okay, all right.
This is tonight.
Okay. I was going to give a bachelor, but don't, don't do that.
Not a good thing.
That's freaky, yeah.
Thank you for being there to help ask questions, right?
Is that from districts? Yeah.
Thank you.
How'd Monti do?
It was really helpful, thank you so much.
By the time the playoff holes ended, it was dark.
Tim Trimble will tell me how he did.
I have no idea how they did.
Did you watch College Game Day?
No.
Uh, INESQ was the, was the guest picker.
Oh, I think I did see something.
She was, she was hilarious.
She was terrible to start and then got better.
I need to turn this off.
By the time they got to Oregon making the pick, she was difficult Sabrina, she was just talking.
You know what? I'm going to turn it off. My kids have figured out how to send messages that makes a little ding. Like they got around it, I can't turn it off.
Then you should reset up an appointment.
Yes, I have to turn my phone completely off.
You're, we are calling, I'm calling the October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two meeting for the Montesano City Council to order if you will all stand with me for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call roll call?
Councilman Bryson. Councilman Carl.
Here.
Councilman Coe.
Here.
Councilwoman Jester. Councilwoman Scaramouka.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Here.
And Councilman Trimble.
Here.
Move to excuse you, have some council member?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Bryson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now at approval of minutes. Is there a motion?
Minutes or bills?
Oh, I'm so sorry, bills. Thank you.
Yes, I have a motion to approve the bills as listed.
Is there a second?
Oh, I thought I was supposed to say more.
Second.
Uh, would the Finance Committee like to do a report?
That's where I say more. Uh, yes, um, so the total, um, for the last two weeks is two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents. Um, those are for five-six-four-three-seven through seven-four. And the greatest outlay there was to the Grace Harbor Road Department for the Chip Seal Project for one hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-seven cents.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of finance? Or any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, the approval of bills is audited, is, um, the motion carries. We are now at approval of minutes.
Second.
Second.
There is a motion and second to approve the minutes as written. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are at the first time for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment at this time? I'm going to wait, uh, an additional twenty seconds to see if there's anybody online that would like to make public comment. This will be, I believe, our last live recording, just FYI to the council. Uh, we will continue to, um, have it on our website, recorded within twenty-four hours of this meeting. Okay. Hearing no public comment, um, there we are moving to committee reports. Does anyone have a committee that met in between, uh, the last meeting and this one? Go ahead.
I attended a planning commission meeting, um, last Wednesday. And they were taxed with doing a review of the, the Shoreline's master plan. And it was a Zoom meeting that was attended by Planning Commission and the Department of Ecology and members of the community that didn't show up. And it's a, basically, it's every eight years, I guess, and, uh, the biggest change would have been if they, if they changed the floodplain area or the, or the Department of Ecology asked that the setbacks, the various setbacks be changed. None of that happened, so there really wasn't any comment from anyone from the community, so it was sort of smooth sailing. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
It wasn't a forestry committee meeting, but it was an issue that, uh, rose from, uh, the Forestry Committee and action taken by the council. You remember that when we acquired the Garrish property as part of the city forest land, uh, a little-known, uh, state regulation required, uh, tax to be paid, uh, by the city that increased the cost of the sale beyond what the council had approved. Uh, eventually that cost was brought down, but, uh, still it was an issue that, uh, we had heard several times shouldn't be something that would stop a city or a working forest from acquiring forest land, uh, with the intent of harvesting it, especially for, uh, city projects. So it was suggested by, um, Dan Lindgren, the county assessor, uh, Lauren Heiner, our forester, uh, that we seek a legislative fix to the, uh, to that. Uh, we had a meeting, uh, last week with Representative Theringer, uh, myself, Christian Sagan, um, Sanger with the City of Aberdeen, uh, and, uh, Mr. Lindgren also met with Representative Theringer to talk about, uh, possible legislative action that could be taken on that. Uh, Representative Theringer, uh, was open to, uh, pursuing it, uh, suggested that we, uh, uh, meet with Representative Orca, uh, out of Lewis County to see about, uh, getting bipartisan support on it, possibly having him prime the bill, uh, with Representative Theringer supporting it. So, uh, a meeting is set up in the not-too-distant future, well, be set up very soon. Uh, I'll contact, uh, Representative Orca's office to, uh, set up that meeting and, uh, hope to have something that we can, uh, report back on and, uh, hopefully something that we can pursue coming up for the twenty-twenty-three legislative session.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about that? Um, I had a meeting with Cog, uh, pretty much it was not anything, um, dramatic. The only thing that we did that would, uh, it will not impact the cities, but we did increase wages beyond what was, or we did a, um, retention incentive pay, uh, that we expect to move forward with, but that was done, uh, without adding to membership fees, so. Anybody have any questions? Me? Okay. Then we're going to move on to old business, there is none, we're moving on to new business. The agenda did not include an ordinance, um, well, before we get to ordinance's resolution, there is an ordinance vacating a certain right-of-way granting the request upon conditions, providing for time limits and compliance, declaring an effective date. Um, I did want to put that on for today's agenda, absent anyone having, um, objection to that. This is something that we've talked about, uh, I think for several months, but it was, uh, not ready to be on the agenda until Monday. And so we'd like to make sure we add that in. But going back to new business, does anyone have any objection about putting that ordinance in for today's, um, discussion? So going back to new business, uh, the twenty-twenty-three LeMay contract for garbage recyclables and yard waste collection is on, uh, the agenda. It is set for action, um, that is, um, up to you whether you guys want to take action today. Is that a motion?
What's the numberless resolution?
Um, I don't think Yeah. It, uh, nine-nine-six.
I move adoption of resolution nine-nine-six. Second.
I don't, I don't think this is, uh,
Well, it's probably has its own, but it's just amended as of today's date.
Right. So the resolution number, we wouldn't be using a new resolution number, I believe it's, uh, the old resolution number that continues and that is amended as we go forward.
So amended.
Okay. And I'll take that the second has been amended as well. And, uh, anyway, does anybody have any, this is, uh, LeMay's, we, we raise the rates traditionally once a year, it's consistent with the contract that we have. Um, does anyone have any questions about this?
Are we going to have someone, um, here tonight to talk about it?
We do not, do you want to talk about it?
If you want to.
Uh, feel free.
I'm here, come on here.
Okay, I know, I can barely see you because I don't have any glasses, but come on up.
Okay. So, thank you, Mayor.
Of course, Roger.
So it's, uh, like the mayor was saying, it's our
Will you please introduce yourself for the
Oh, I'm Roger Sloan, the site manager for LeMay's. Um, if anybody didn't know that, but, uh, yeah, so, um, as the mayor was saying, it's our annual contract, so rate adjustment, it's, uh, a contract signed with for eighty percent of the CPI, which, uh, this year is pretty high, it's at eight point, um, sorry,
Seven, nine-four.
Nine-four percent CPI this year. Uh, contract reads that it's eighty percent of CPI, but in the contract also there's a five percent cap. So we can't go above five percent on the CPI department. So the rate adjustments are at the five percent for the CPI. With that, too, is the, uh, disposal fee that is, uh, adjusted at the transfer station. Those are contractual through the, us and the county, so that they're all the same guidelines, um, as this, and then we pass that through to the rates also. It's pretty high this year, it's like, yeah, all the increases, uh, it's going up eleven sixty-one a ton at six overage, which is highest I've ever seen. This is just, it's just covering our cost adjustments, and everybody knows, I know the city has cost adjustments, also there's a crazy high, and we're not gaining any margins, we're just going by the contractual guidelines, and, uh, I would much rather not have this conversation.
Does anybody, does anyone have any questions?
So when, um, folks go over the contract, um, I'm, I'm a new council member, so I don't, um, know what's offered in the contract, so where would I be able to see that?
Um, if you have a package, there is
Tonight?
There is, uh, there's a, a rate, uh, section of that.
It looks like this? Yeah, it's under section, I think, two, let me double check.
Okay, because I looked through here and I noticed that, okay, so we get, um, our garbage picked up and recycling.
Six or one.
Are you guys connected to the recycling that's down by the Public Works?
We
Or is that
The glass?
County. Yeah, the glass.
That's, we've serviced that for the county.
Okay. And so will Montesano have last pickup at our homes ever?
We've talked about that, um, and those are things that have to be discussed throughout, and there's a lot of challenges with that, safety is a big one, um, for us.
And then the last was, um, uh, stuff from your yard, yard waste and things like that. So is that, do I need to drive it up to the
At this time, Grace Harbor County doesn't have a yard waste, um, program due to isolation and how much it costs to, for us to take care of it, because we have to haul it, we would have to haul it to Dino, and then I'll also pay it sixty-five dollar a ton for that. We've talked about, uh, programs in the past, and they were pretty expensive, and not saying that it is going to come in the future, it will, um, but those are things we have to work out.
And then styrofoam?
Styrofoam is not a type.
In Olympia, they have a place where you can drop it off?
Yeah, I don't know what they're doing with it, we don't have any market for it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You bet.
Um, so Roger and I have, um, had many discussions over different versions of, of options. But the only thing that the City of Montesano probably could do, uh, with a lot more legwork than I have time for, so if anybody wants to do it and have those meetings with Roger, uh, is to do a pilot program. Uh, it would take a lot of twisting around to figure out how we would do it, um, and, um, with no promises made from LeMay's, uh, but it, it plastics are obviously no longer being put on a barge and shipped off. Styrofoam is not happening, the only place for yard waste and food waste isn't to Dino. Uh, they would have to build a new facility to take care of that here. So lots of challenges, uh, and I do think there are things that he and I have discussed, but
Things have changed a little bit, too, Mayor, there's some legislation that's gone through that it's going to be coming in the future, um, and it'll make it easier because it'll be more of a county-wide, so more people will be covering the cost, so not to say, you know, don't quote me on a lot of things right now, it's all in it, you know, so, um, it, it's, it's looking brighter for the possibility. Um, glasses really would be, per type glass, I would really, not really a favorite, but do the safety and stuff.
And Roger, may I ask, I know a few years ago, there wasn't even a market for glass.
Um, there still isn't.
Okay, I, I, I wondered, all my friends who very carefully drive their things down, and I don't, I'm like, I don't think it goes anywhere.
So it does, and I don't, and don't, some people are saying, you know, because the market's so bad that we're not recycling still and all that, we're still recycling. We're paying to get rid of the glass, and it's going up to a facility that then grinds it and puts it into products, so it's still being recycled.
Are they making the revenue then, rather than you? Yeah, okay, okay.
And to speak to the mayor, he also commented about a few years ago, the, um, recycle prices were down so bad, right now, we're paying a hundred and fifteen dollars a ton to, to the processing plant for our recycle. We have to pay them to process that, because they have no market for it. That's above our operating costs and everything else. We've been doing this from about two thousand and eighteen, so recycle is a tough area right now, and it's really impacting our, our operation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Really good to be here first.
Given that we don't really know the resolution number, we're just going to call it Resolution LeMay, and with your permission, we're going to insert the number, um, as part of this. So if there's any further, there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we are at twenty-twenty-three Greater Grace Harbor service contract, uh, before we, is the, a group, miss, sorry, Lynette Buffington had offered to come tonight, but they have the leadership, um, banquet this weekend, and so I said, oh, why don't you wait till January and relax? Um, I didn't think there was any driving need for them to come, uh, before the end of the year. If you guys want them to come, they're happy to come, she said. And, uh, but, but regardless of that, we have a contract with them that I think they have been incredibly helpful with us, so I would be, you guys can either consider this until next meeting, or you can give me a motion.
Move to authorize the mayor to sign the twenty-twenty-three Greater Grace Harbor service contract.
Second.
There is a motion and a double second, uh, for the City of Montesano, uh, entering into the ongoing, uh, contract municipal services agreement with Greater Grace Harbor and authorizing the mayor to, uh, sign the same. Is there any discussion?
Just to say that in my experience with Greater Grace Harbor has been that they do a lot of great work for the, uh, for the county as a whole, and Montesano included in that, and I think that twenty-three hundred dollars is the bargaining price for that.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Stormwater easement, uh, this is the, um, you'll see that the, the proposed easement is attached. This is between, uh, KMSK Sylvia LLC. Does anybody want to, would you guys want more information, because only really Mike is going to be able to explain this to you guys? Would you guys like to hear, uh, anything from Mike, or would you like to make a motion?
You're always welcome an explanation from
There you go.
Yes, this, this came up to Public Works, uh, two months, like, two meetings ago. I think there was a recommendation from Public Works to go ahead and move forward with this. It's a portion, five-foot portion of a property adjacent to an easement in between Sylvia and Church Street over where the new apartments are over there. And during the construction of those apartments, the, it was determined that the city has a storm line that was on this other private property, not associated with those apartments. And so we worked out a deal with this person to secure five feet, not only for that stormwater line, but also to allow better ingress and egress for, for LeMay trucks, so, and other folks coming through there. So, um, we calculate the easement value just based on the square foot value, the, or the assessed value of the property. And so there is a thirty, or how much, what's the number in there, thirty-four?
Thirty-four hundred.
That will come out of stormwater maintenance.
Does anyone have any questions? Is there a motion?
Consider a motion to authorize the, uh, mayor to sign the proposed easement.
No second. There is a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign the proposed easement and expending thirty-four hundred dollars. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next is the inter-agency reimbursement agreement with the Administrative Officer of Courts.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the inter-agency reimbursement agreement with the Administrative Office of Courts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trying to get the numbers right. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
How many cases do we know could be affected by this decision?
Um, my understanding with the chief, okay, so my understanding with the chief is that most of our stuff goes over to, uh, Great, uh, Grace Harbor County. We may have some maybe marijuana stuff, but we don't know, um, and so hopefully the answer is none. But it is a reimbursement, um, so, uh, Mr. Coker, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just, I mean, we haven't really been, I mean, even before Blake, marijuana was not a, uh, you know, was not a high priority on the prosecution side of things, so, uh, there's probably not a ton of cases. This is, this is, the big lift is with the counties and, and to do the court with felony stuffs.
Thank you.
So, um, with that, does anybody have any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now at the twenty-twenty-three Budget and Debt Review. This is our final presentation for, uh, budget, uh, in the month of November. If you guys want any, you guys haven't expressed the need to have any workshops or that you had any concerns outside of your committees. So with that, I'm not planning on any workshops, um, and this is, I think, a, a pretty good summary. So go ahead, Ms. Sagan.
You guys hear me okay?
Or do I need to use this? For the recording, you do.
Okay. So, on the start of this small presentation, um, in the revenue side, in the, I'm going to be discussing three funds, the general fund, uh, Fund One-O-three and Fund One-O-six. One-O-three is the hotel motel sat, tax, and One-O-six is the REIT, which is Real Estate Excise Tax Fund. In the general fund, the major points that, um, will be raised every year is the one percent levy tax. Our retail sales and use tax, um, is currently up seventeen percent this year, but I scaled it down from seven fifty to seven hundred for next year, um, because I want to play it safe as far as, uh, the revenue, so it's a nine percent increase from last year. Um, it's all the taxes we raised, uh, two and a half percent, um, every category through that, our building permits have taken a giant leap, thirty percent increase this year. So I went in the middle with an increase, uh, with that. Even our concealed weapons permit, up six percent, all of our taxes, um, through the state have increased. I, uh, increased all of them, the one, one that we have not, that decreased from the state proposed, was our city and county assistance, um, tax, and that is due to the percentage of the real estate excise tax that we've gotten. The state, uh, looked at our percentage due to our property taxes and a real estate tax due to our population, and they, uh, fund the money, and they've reduced ours by thirteen thousand dollars this year, so. We'll have to wait and see on that one. But the only other, um, revenue besides the interest, uh, I am actively, um, investing in the LGIP. In the last three months, we've made seven thousand dollars in, um, the interest rate, so I am investing our left, um, money in our LGIP fund, which will increase about seventeen thousand dollars next year if all goes well. Um, for the expenditures, uh, we have the one, uh, new Public Works hire, which is taken out of our street fund and parks. We have, uh, the Orca Clean Air Act, uh, contract has went up four percent. Insurance, uh, our insurance rate through Nicholson has went up five percent, that's the increase in the expenditures. And the Monti Community Center, um, went from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars a year, and the Council of Government was a two and a half percent increase.
Right, um, that is not, the Monti Community Center is not reflected in the budget you have, but that's the, I believe, the
Yes, I just found out about it tonight.
Yeah, so
That is the requested increase?
That, so I want to be clear, that's, that's the requested increase, right?
Requested, yes.
So that is not, that's the only one that I think that is different, and the wages.
And all wages are two and a half percent, along with, um, the increase in, um, insurance is four point eight percent for Teamsters, and I believe the fire, fire insurance was more than that. Um, the ARPA money, we have the two things, one hundred and forty thousand for the generator and two hundred and fifty thousand for the daycare facility. That's our two projects next year. And the other transfer is for EMS to our fire budget, which we increased twenty thousand this year. Um, it hasn't been increased since two thousand and nineteen and all through COVID, it's a five-point-three increase this year for twenty thousand dollars. Is there any questions about the general fund?
So, um, going back to the, um, Montesano Community Center, since this is the proposed budget, I think that, I'm not sure exactly how we do this, I think that we change it at the next meeting to update so that we can so that we can make it consistent, so everybody can see it. Is that how we do it? I can't remember how we do it.
Yeah, Vinnie, are you talking about the changes that are up, that are in there now, or
They're not, they're not in there now, uh, there will be changes to, there's proposed by the count, the Finance Committee, a few changes. And, and so those need to be reflected before it goes public.
Yes.
November eighth.
Okay.
Okay, Fund One-O-three is the hotel motel tax fund, we have a sixty percent increase this year, year-to-date, we've collected sixteen thousand dollars. In the expend, in the expenditures, we have that tourism, propose the tourism, uh, chamber, three thousand dollar contract with Angie Brown, uh, five thousand three thousand dollar contract with Andrew Brown, uh, five thousand for the billboards and banners, and up to three thousand for the Festival of Lights. And that's restricted revenue, we have to use that for, um, tourism and advertising and stuff, and things to bring brochures, things to bring people to the city. And for Fund 106 is the re-excise restricted revenue account, which is the real estate and excise tax. Year-to-date, um, we brought in ninety-four thousand dollars this year. That's an eighty-eight percent increase. That is huge. So we, the only thing on the expenditure portion, we have raised it to fifty thousand to increase Fund 310, which is the street fund for projects. Are there any questions?
Do you, I guess this is a question both for Mike as well as, do you think that the amount of REIT will be incre... If, if there is a recession, would he...
And that's why I only raised it ten thousand next year. Just to play it safe. Because even though it's up that much this year, I, you know, I wanted to make it... Okay, so let's talk about debt for a minute. Okay, the mayor asked me to print this off, so you guys have a little idea of where we stand with our debt spreadsheet, if any of you got a chance to look at it. So it's for ten years, oh, it's actually twelve, but we only have ten years, 2023 to 2033. And we owe a total to date, three point, three, three million, three hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. And as of 2030, we only have the forest, um, forest purchase land from the general fund that pays that eighty thousand. So we, we don't have much debt. I mean, we have more in our account than we do debt, that's, that's a good ratio right now.
So, um, just for everybody, just from background, we have, um, the sewer USDA alone. We have the river bank, um, also sewer. And then we have the storage tank that predated all of us, I can't remember when it was done. Two tanks. And then we have, um, the long-term fire, and that was the engine, if I remember correctly, and one ambulance. And then we have, oh, I'm sorry, the ambulance is right next door. And we did the Umpqua Forest Purchase, which is the one that was most recent. And so that is the total different debts, and that's why that one has such a long life. We should be paying hopefully some of this off over the next five years. Any questions about these debts?
Now, the principal number, that's the money that we owe at, at the beginning of the year? Or is that the amount we pay on that debt that year?
Principal is what is, is what we owe. We don't pay... Are these our payments?
Yes.
It seems odd that the principal seems to go up in the consecutive years.
Well, yeah, because you pay more on the loan, the interest goes down.
Oh, I get, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
You pay more off every year.
Yeah, it's not like a home remortization, okay.
Okay, any questions at all? I wanted to make sure you saw our debts. These are the ones that kinda sit with us all the time, that are, are in our budget, but are not necessarily in front of you all the time. What is our debt capacity? Do you know? Capacity? I think, I don't think it's more than a few more million beyond this. And so I think we have roughly around three to four, five million dollars, and this is off the top of my head. You can correct me if that sounds off. So we are, while we're healthy, um, in a, in a spectrum, we have just the right amount of debt. Unless there's something significant that we want to purchase, we probably don't need any more debt. And some of these debts, like the fire and ambulances, have cash streams that are attached to them, so that helps as well. Any other questions, uh, for Gretchen or about any of this stuff?
So the sewer and water listings here, where do those payments, the funds for those payments, come from?
They're in the budget, under the expenditures for capital.
Okay.
Water's 401, and it comes out of there.
Okay.
Sewer's out there, too.
So we have to have, obviously, some form of revenue stream that, to pay off the debt, and it could just be simply out of whatever gets put in, so water, uh, whatever the total revenues are for water through...
Utilities.
Utilities, uh, we would just take a portion out for the debt. Any other questions? Okay, you are welcome to call Gretchen and ask anything you need to, if you have any questions. I know you guys have worked through this pretty diligently, but, um...
Sixteen forty-nine.
Thank you. We are moving on to ordinances and resolutions.
I don't know what's wrong with my table, I'm sorry.
This is ordinance number sixteen forty-nine.
Yep.
And it is an ordinance vacating, vacating a certain right of way, granting the request upon conditions, providing for time limits for compliance, and declaring an effective date. Is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number...
Sixteen forty-nine.
There you go.
Is there a second?
Second.
This ordinance was the one that we had considered roughly around, I don't know, almost a month plus ago. This is the French one, they came in, they were talking about what amount they wanted, they figured that out, and that's what's in here. Any discussion?
So the Jantons are not interested in any part of this property?
That's my understanding. Oh, yeah, that's my understanding, sorry, wrong person. Just to affirm, uh, Miss Sagan said the answer's no. No, they're not interested.
All right.
Any further questions? And if you, um, I, I, we did send them out notice of that, right? We did notify them of that.
Yes.
So with that, uh, this is a roll call vote. If there's no further discussion, uh, will the clerk please call roll?
Councilman Carl?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coe?
Aye.
Councilwoman Jester?
Aye.
Councilwoman Scaramouka?
Aye.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye.
And Councilman Trimble?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Ordinance sixteen forty-nine passes. Thank you. Uh, we are back at public comment, is there anyone that would like to make a public comment at this time? Um, we are at council comment. Let's start with, um, Councilman, um...
Carol.
Carol. A long day.
Days are long. Nothing in particular this evening, just enjoying the rain and trying to stay dry.
Councilwoman Jester, thank you.
Well, I was hoping that Rollin would talk about the fire department volunteers that went down south to help put out the fire there, and he told me before the meeting that they are back. Those two young men are actually back. And kudos to our fire department and to those two young men.
Thank you.
That's actually the, I believe it was the third deployment that they've done this year.
That's what's in the paper.
Yes, that's great. Thank you. Councilman Coe?
It is great to have the rain back. Only thing that would turn me off is if I was treading around a golf course, and it'd be horrible. But it is a district golf, and we did have Monty golfers, uh, participating. We also had a Monty soccer team, clinched up a league championship by beating that team to the east. And we'll be playing that team to the east, uh, what, on Friday, at, uh, Jack Rottles, last home game, senior night, so come on out and cheer on, uh, Class of 2023 as they take the field for the last time in the regular season against that team from over there.
Thank you. Councilman Trimble? Councilman Scaramouka?
I'm not excited about the rain, but, uh, I just wanna sit in the house and eat all my Halloween candy.
Seriously.
Public Works next Wednesday. Be there? That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman, uh, Thomas?
I just support what everyone's said tonight. Thank you.
I would add one thing, uh, just condolences, uh, to the Walsh family. Representative, uh, James Walsh, as you all know, his wife passed away, uh, car accident yesterday. They're going through, uh, something absolutely unimaginable and horrible, and, uh, our condolences go out to them.
Thank you, and I was just gonna echo that, and so, um, with, I don't, before I say I don't have any comments, I, um, wish you guys a good Halloween, and I will see you in a couple weeks. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?